This nation was founded on the principle that all men are created equal.
We hold these truths to be self-evident.
That all men are created equal.
I'll tell you what freedom is to me. No fear. I mean, really, no fear.
Created equal.
From WDET in Detroit, this is Created Equal. I'm Stephen Henderson and I'm here in our studio with Kerry Junior II. He is the show's producer. Hey Kerry.
How you doing? It's the Weekly Recap.
It is the Weekly Recap, our little tune. We don't know our tune.
We don't know the tune.
We need a tune.
The bit is becoming the fact that we don't know at this point. This is all the bit.
So we had a really wide-ranging group of shows this week.
Some interesting, some historically surprising, and others just kind of quirky and fun. So yeah, I appreciated it.
Yeah. So we talked about a new report that shows that our schools are as segregated today as they were in the late 1960s, which is an astonishing thing just to say and kind of stop, pause, and think about. We also had a conversation with a guy who lived out the words of the US Constitution, literally for an entire year, A.J. Jacobs. He was a hoot to talk about, about that.
Considering when you talk about committing to the bit, I mean, that, he really committed fully to the whole.
He went hard. There's no question.
Dedication.
And then we had a conversation about Detroit and the future of the Renaissance Center. Now that GM says that it is going to move out in 2025, what comes next? And how do you account for all the people who are affected by decisions like that? And how it connects to some of the other projects that are going on, like the rethink of I-375, which is nearby, the restoration of Black Bottom and Paradise Valley, which is all part of that discussion. So again, a wide range of subjects, but all really focused on what we try to do here on Created Equal.
Absolutely. And I think, I don't have much more to share about this. I mean, I want to get into it. I want to get into the whole shock value of what, about how segregated schools are today, and how we compare those to the past.
Yeah. Let's start off by revisiting our conversation about our segregated schools. We had a conversation with Gary Orfield, who I remember from my early days as an education reporter, as the source on school desegregation. This is somebody who's been researching this subject for many decades.
Yeah, you can go back and find multiple research articles he's published outlining this type of research. The most recent one that came out in April of 2024 is Brown v. Board of Education, 70 years later, essentially. The Unfinished Battle, the exact title, "The Unfinished Battle for Integration in Multiracial America: From Brown to Now." Gary Orfield co-authored this research, and they looked at an analysis of the, of school segregation, the populations of different schools across the country, and they compared it regionally, from the north to the south, and saw how the integration efforts that were implemented in the 1960s and 70s, how they improved integration, how we saw more diverse schools, but then also over time in the 90s, other policies, other policies were implemented that resulted in us regressing. We ended up getting more segregated, and now we're at a point where we're as segregated now as we were in the 1960s. And he details all of that.
Yeah. So we're going to start by revisiting our conversations about the country's segregated schools, how maybe not much has changed since the time of Jim Crow. Dr. Orfield, you were about to say something about the value of integration.
You know, the really good thing about school integration is that it's not really that hard to do, and it has big benefits. The research for the last 50 years shows that really disadvantaged kids gain a lot from being in a diverse school. It really changes their lives in many ways, increases their chances of going to college, changes what kind of job and income they get. That's all kinds of influences on their lives. And the advantage of it is that it doesn't do anything to harm more privileged kids. There's very powerful research for the last 50 years that shows that privileged kids don't lose and disadvantaged kids gain in integrated schools. So it is a win-win.
Yeah.
But people don't believe it. People are afraid their children are going to lose.
Right.
But they don't, they don't lose, and they do gain in the sense that they, they learn how to operate in a multiracial, multi-class society, which is a huge advantage, given what our future society is going to look like.
Yeah.
A win-win system that has been made into a lose-lose system by the politics and by extremely conservative courts that have thrown away a lot of the tools that we can use to accomplish this.
Yeah. You said something there I want to go back to. You said it's not that hard to do. What do you mean by that?
I mean, what, the kids actually get along. They find it interesting. The problem, where it's really hard, is the people in the community.
The adults.
Interesting that the research shows that the families of kids who's, who's in schools that are actually integrated say it's a positive experience. It's the people who aren't in those schools who think it's a terrible, awful development that's fearful and that's harmful. But the people actually experience it, find it to be quite positive. But the politics of it are ugly. People are mobilized against this by fears.
Yeah. I mean, that reminds me of a quote from Dr. King that goes to the idea that we distrust each other and dislike each other because we fear each other, and we fear each other because we don't know each other. I mean, you just kind of summed up that quote right there.
That's right. One of the experiences of, of school desegregation, where it occurs, especially if it occurs with good leadership, is that people of different racial backgrounds discover that they want the same things. They really are afraid of each other, and they learn that they want the same things. And that's a powerful experience for families and for, for people in communities that do experience successful desegregation.
Yeah, yeah.
One of the problems right now is that most of our racial change is going on in suburban rings. One of our recent studies shows that if you take the 25 largest metros in the country, the majority of the kids in the suburban rings of those areas are non-white. But they're getting segregated in the suburbs, and nobody's really doing anything to make it come out differently.
Yeah. That's actually where I wanted to go next. This idea of what's changed demographically in, in America since 1968. So here in, in Detroit, for instance, you know, the, the city has been majority black, at least by census, since 1980. And the suburbs were almost all white still at that, at that point. But on the 2020 census, one of the things we learned was that the majority of African-Americans who live in metro Detroit now live outside the city of Detroit. They live, they live in suburbs. And of course, the city is even more heavily African-American than it was in 1980. I mean, it's still somewhere around 78, I think, percent. But that, that phenomenon where you have black families moving to the suburbs, moving to communities that by definition are at least a little more integrated than, you know, than, than the city is, what effect has that had on, on school integration and why?
It's really important people understand this. Beginning in the 1970s, black families began to move out from central cities. And now in many metros, the large majority of middle-class black families are in the suburbs. And that's true for Latinos as well. And the suburbs are becoming very multiracial. The problem is nothing is being done to integrate the kids and the communities as this happens. So the risk is that we resegregate suburb by suburb, community by community, just the stupid way we did with our central cities. And this, the individual communities become predominantly non-white, and then they become predominantly poor, and all of the middle-class people try to flee from them, including the middle-class people of color. And this is just a destructive process that's really been going on for more than a century in our metro areas, and it's now getting well into the suburbs. There's no other place to run for most people. We ought to figure out how to stay and to be together. To integrate and keep those places integrated, we need plans, and we need regionalism. That in, as we go through racial change in the suburbs. Why don't we enforce fair housing so that we don't steer all these black families and Latino families into these places that are resegregating? Why don't we put our subsidized housing in, in places that have really good schools instead of using them in a way that increases segregation of schools?
So I guess one of the things I'm getting at though is, is if there are more African-Americans living in the suburbs, and I mean, there are some examples of suburbs that have become majority African-American here in, in Detroit. And of course, you know, as blacks move into those places, we're seeing the same thing that happened in the city when African-Americans started to move around. But it seems though like there is a greater opportunity for school integration in the suburbs because, you know, many of the communities are multiracial. There are African-Americans, there are Latinos, there are Asians, there are white families, all living in the same technical jurisdiction. So, so is that, is that more conducive to, to integration? Is that, in those areas, are we seeing better school integration? And if not, why not?
Well, we're seeing it, but lots of times it's transitional.
Okay.
To make it last, we have to have a plan to make it last.
Okay.
That includes both school and housing plan. So what we see, for example, is housing that's being marketed in areas where the schools are changing racially is being shown to black families and Latino families, it isn't being shown to white families or many Asian families. We need to make sure the real estate market doesn't work in a way that resegregates communities and that helps them remain interracial. Communities need to be active about that and get on top of that so that it doesn't happen to them, because that's what happens to communities that go through resegregation. Planners need to, need to think about where they put their subsidized housing so it doesn't make this process work in a destructive way. We need to think about this to get a different outcome. It won't happen by itself. The advantage of suburbs is there is a lot of diversity right now. The disadvantage is there isn't a plan, and these are small communities. So they can go through resegregation pretty fast if nothing is done.
So in places where we have maintained more school integration, probably because of the makeup of communities, I suspect, in the South, do we see better outcomes? Do we see, do we see that, that African-Americans in those schools do better than, than kids in segregated schools?
Yes, we do see better outcomes. We didn't really know the outcomes very well until quite recently because nobody transferred, nobody followed long-term results. They mostly followed test scores. The test scores didn't move that much, although usually they improved significantly. Where black students had been three years behind, they ended up two years behind. What really did change, and that nobody really measured much, was what happened to the lives of the students. And it turns out, Rucker Johnson at Berkeley, for example, has studied them over generations. And basically, the students that were desegregated, depending on how much desegregation they got, had different lives. They're more likely to go to college, they're more likely to finish, they're more likely to live and work in multiracial communities, they're more likely to income, have higher incomes, their health conditions even are better. So yes, there were major benefits. They're mostly about benefits of life chances rather than benefits of test scores.
Right, right. And, and if you think about that, I mean, there's some great irony to that, isn't there? African-Americans moved to cities like Detroit and Chicago and Boston because they were escaping terrible discrimination in the, in the South and attracted to industrial opportunity that existed in these cities. And overall, of course, the outcomes from a financial perspective have been better for African-Americans who've moved north. It's, it's really interesting that school outcomes, though, are better, are better in the South.
Yeah, I think it's really one of the underlying factors that has led to the fact that blacks have been moving back to the South now since the 1970s.
Yes, yes.
You know, they're not, Detroit and Chicago aren't the promised land. We're Los Angeles. They're, they're going to the South. And I think part of that is there's, there's somewhat better interracial contact and opportunities in parts of the South, partly because of civil rights, which really did change the South much more deeply than it changed the North.
That was our conversation with researcher Gary Orfield about segregation patterns in the United States. After a break, we'll be back and hear a conversation about the future of Detroit's Renaissance Center. So our next segment is a listen back to a conversation we had about the Renaissance Center on the riverfront in Detroit. GM is moving out. What comes next?
Yeah. GM announced plans that they were going to move out of the Renaissance Center and into the new Hudson's Detroit Development by Bedrock. And it's, it's been, GM was a staple tenant in the Renaissance Center for almost 30 years, I believe.
Yeah.
Late 90s, early 2000s. So, you know, that's a big deal. Now people are asking questions about what's going to come of, what's going to become of the Renaissance Center itself. It's on the riverfront, it's primary real estate. We are hoping to see something that's going to be great for the citizens going forward too.
Yeah. And I thought one of the really interesting parts of this show was the calls, of course, that we got, the ideas that people actually had, or the memories that they had about the Renzen. Some of them about getting lost, of course, we've all done that in that, in that building. But there were other real fond memories of, of the place and, and the idea that maybe this is an opportunity for us to make it better somehow, make it more accessible to Detroiters, make it more part of, of downtown instead of, you know, separated by this big street with, you know, eight lanes. We had two great people for the conversation. Kaylee Hall is a Detroit news reporter who covers GM. She had a conversation with GM, GM CEO Mary Barra this week about the move. We also had Harriet Saperstein with us, a legendary planner here in the city of Detroit, who's thought a lot about the way we use land and make it accessible to the people who live here. Before we get to our callers, Harriet, and we've already got a number of people queuing up, that is not a surprise. When we went into the break, you were talking about, you were starting to talk about how all of this fits in with some other questions about downtown and, and about the city more generally, transit being, being one of them. I want you to, to lean a little more into those thoughts and, and share those with our listeners. The Renzen is not just, you know, an isolated building on the riverfront. It is part of a much bigger, you know, part of the city, and it, and it connects to all these other things in the city. What, what's your thought about how we ought to be reconsidering that now that it's, that it's mostly empty?
Well, there's probably too much to talk about in this short program in terms of that. And like everybody else, I'm just thinking about it since the Mary Barra announcement, Barra announcement. But basically, we're talking about how the expressways change, and the people who are looking about 275 and 75 are just thinking in terms of car traffic. They are not really thinking about the people. They are not thinking about the fact that Lafayette Elmwood Park, Black Bottom, as it existed before, and should be relevantly created, supported in terms of at least concept, as well as probably projects in the future, seem to be still at a distance or all as separate. So if we have to change Renzen, and we have no choice about it, GM owns it, they're going to move out, we're not going to be able to stop that, what do we do with those five buildings? I'm going to let the other two go, those two extra ones. But what are we going to do with those five to both reflect the new kinds of patterns of where do nonprofits go for offices? Where do basically more schools start? We could have a school in one of those buildings. That might be very interesting. I don't want to compete with the Center for Creative Studies, but there's lots of technical schools that we could do. And imagine trying to bring them, the young people that are in. Oddly enough, I just discovered in getting ready for the program that my daughter, who is now in her 60s, was one of the people that put a shovel in the ground when Renaissance Center started. She doesn't even remember that, but I found a picture that did that.
Like at the groundbreaking, right?
Yeah, the groundbreaking. But, you know, because it's there, you know, it is the image of Detroit. The Carousel Against Renzen is the image of Detroit that people have when we look at a positive image. There's lots of negative ones, unfortunately. And we need to reflect those positive images and make them even stronger. We need to take Black Bottom and the history of what we had, the immigrant patterns that came in, and make them apart. Why don't we get a museum down there? We talked about an aquarium down there. You know, Cleveland has both, Cleveland has the museum, other places have the, Baltimore has the aquarium. What could we do that would be an institution that would basically bring people down to visit and to stay and give them another additional way of remembering the past of Detroit, the present of Detroit, in order to build up the future of Detroit?
Yeah.
That's what GM needs to think about. That's what we all have to think about so that GM doesn't think only in corporate terms.
Yeah.
Not enough of a lecture for you?
No, no, no. I think that's great. And, and I think it's really important that you brought up the work that we're starting to really talk about more earnestly around I-375 and what happens to it, right? That's, that's right next to the Renzen, and it empties, you know, it empties out on Jefferson, right in front of the Renzen. You probably can't, yeah, go ahead.
I'm one who supports actually covering it up, as they've done in some other cities. It's a fortune, but you know something? Bad investment is worth it.
You would cap it.
To get the land on the surface in ways that we could get through and connect by walking as well as doing other things. Build on what we have. Don't destroy what we have to make the cars more easily go places. That's what we're still thinking about. Connect Easton Market in a better way. Find ways to get through. There are creative ways to think about it, and I don't think we're doing it yet.
Yeah, yeah. Again, 313-577-1019 is the number here on the phones. You can also go to Twitter and hashtag Created Equal or at WDET if you want to participate in the conversation. Tell us what you would do with the Renaissance Center when GM leaves it next year. It'll be largely empty. Would you rethink the whole thing? Would you rethink part of it? What do you, what do you imagine is possible in that space? We're going to start today with James in Dearborn. James, welcome to the show.
Hi, good morning. I'd like to kind of first, my first class in urban planning class at Wayne State University, the first book had a picture of the Renaissance Center in Lafayette Park. It said, "Good planning and bad planning." You can imagine which one was bad, the Renaissance Center. But I think what's really super important about, and the guest was just talking about it, is how we connect it to the rest of downtown. What's in there? I think there's many ideas, and some of the ones that were said are really good. I think something community-focused that gives people a reason to go there and then go through to the other side. But really, how do we connect those two things? You know, we've got sky bridges all over town, and we do have one there, but it's not used. Like, how do we get people to use that? Or how do we change what Jefferson Avenue looks like to open up the front of that building to be more useful? I think, you know, what's in there, you could put a business or anything, but if people aren't going, it really doesn't, really doesn't matter.
Yeah.
And without burgers, they might not go.
James, that's a great point, and I'm glad you called, and good luck in your planning career. Harriet, the, the question about Jefferson Avenue, I think, is really important because I'm somebody who talks a lot about the eight and nine-lane streets that we have here in, in Detroit. They're everywhere, right? Michigan Avenue, Woodward and places, Grashit, and, and Jefferson there. You know, building the Renaissance where we did, across Jefferson from the main part of downtown, presented us with a lifelong challenge, really, to make it more part of downtown, to integrate it. What, what James is talking about is, is that no matter what you put in there, you still have to do some of that work. What could that work look like to, to, to not just integrate the Renzen more into downtown, but that part of the riverfront, which is so important as well?
Well, we're beginning to do it a little bit. We're doing a little better with the DeCrenjocut. We're doing a little better with Rehard. But basically, we keep cutting it off from the people, and we keep, we keep justifying in terms of cars. I am not a landscape architect. I am not a transportation planner. I have someone who's spent my life thinking about how do we make life better for people, for individuals, for families, for cultures. And basically, I've seen some of that happening in Detroit. So I'm going to let you see, if you can find somebody else to talk about the landscape nature of this wide street that they seem to be making more difficult. I'm a ex-bicyclist. I'm not allowed to bicycle anymore because I'm 87. I've been around a long time, kind of thing. My mind is not 87, but my body is there now, basically. But we have to find a way to get people to be able to move. And as we're getting more people to bicycle, to electric bicycle, et cetera, how are we helping those connections move better without getting the car drivers angry at us? I mean, even I, when I'm driving a car, sometimes say, "Oh, those bicycle things are making it harder for me to park and harder to do," even though most of the time I'm in the other direction. So basically, we have to really think through the connections that we have. And I think it could take a really interesting home, a weekend, a week, a month, get our various people to start thinking of the alternative ways to do this. You never know where someone's going to come with a creative idea that does have ways of being integrated into what we can do. Transportation has to be brought in. Those people just think cars now. That's not the only way people can get around or should get around, or will get around in the future.
Yeah. James, you know, that's a, that's a perfect answer. James, I really appreciate your call and your comments. I want to go back to the phones here and get to John on the east side. John, what's on your mind today?
So back in the 70s, when I was growing up over in Morningside, it wasn't called that then, you could hear noise coming from down there, and I was an intrigued little boy. And I kept asking Dad, "What, what is that? What is that?" And they're building the Renaissance Center. So when they finally built it, I was bored one summer day, and I rode all the way from Outer Drive downtown on my bicycle, which was the crazy thing. The only thing worse than that was driving out to Metro Park one day because they'll run you right off the road out there. But I got down there to the, to the concrete moat, we called it, and you couldn't hardly get in there. It was only made for people and vehicles. Of course, there was no bike racks or anything. Then I went in there and I got lost for almost three hours, panicked, couldn't get out. Nobody could help me get out of that building.
Pretty easy to do, right?
Fast forward to my working days. I worked a lot downtown. We do work over in the ballrooms for different events in there. It is just the worst building to work in, to get around, to tell people how to get there. You can be in there talking to people on your phone, trying to find each other, and it, it's just a disaster. I say it was built by Ford, recalled and rebuilt by General Motors, you know, you know. But my point here is, there was a study done about 20, 25 years after it was built. And basically, they proved that the Renaissance Center just created vacancies in all the rest of the buildings downtown. It, it, they lost capital, you know, investment to fix the roofs and the windows. And it really didn't renaissance the city. It actually, and it was competing with the Hudson Store for retail. And it literally didn't do what it was promised to do. And I don't see them keeping the Renaissance Center standing. We cannot, you know, after pandemic, it was reported that only 23% of the workforce returned to downtown Detroit. There, there's just not the need for this type of office space anymore.
Yeah. John, I, I would probably agree with you and, and kind of at least err on the side of, of what you're saying there. I, I'm not sure I would go so far as saying we should get rid of it, but I do think that it presents a number of problems and has since it was constructed. And this is a chance to rethink some of those. Kaylee Hall, I want to bring you back into the conversation here. I know you don't cover downtown real estate or, or office space, but this question. I know you don't cover downtown real estate or, or office space, but this question about whether there is the demand for as much office spaces in the Rensen is kind of looming large in the background. I wonder if Mary Barra said anything about, uh, about that question and, and whether that has to, or how that is going to influence what they decide with, with Bedrock and, and the other folks who will end up being involved in, in repurposing it, that, that maybe there's just not enough, uh, there's not enough people working in downtown Detroit to make this, to make this useful.
Yeah, it's been interesting seeing, you know, what's happened with office space since the pandemic. We saw a lot of companies, General Motors included, adopt this hybrid, you know, situation where you can work from home, you can work from the office. Then they're, then they got a little bit more strict with it, right? So now the requirement is, um, they want employees to be in the office, uh, three days a week, and the three days are Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. Um, and so now what you're seeing is, and I know they're not alone in that. I, I think, you know, other companies, um, including like DT are telling folks they have to go back a certain number of days. Um, so I think we're still in this hybrid situation of, of folks working from, from home and then also going to the office a few days a week. Um, but yeah, I, I think office space, you know, when I drive downtown, I, I live in Rochester, when I drive down to Detroit and I drive through Troy, I see four leaf signs across, you know, every single building in Troy.
Mm hmm.
Um, so I think we do have a lot of vacant office space still, right? And I, I don't know how long that's going to take to fill up, but, um, it seems like it is becoming more of like the companies are slowly getting back into, um, you know, wanting, wanting their, their employees to, to be in office. But when I do talk to executives, one thing they tell me is they have to be competitive, right?
Right.
So if, um, if their employees, employees, they still have a lot of power because there's need for, for labor, right? So if those folks want, um, a hybrid situation, I think a lot of times we're still in the situation where companies do have to kind of, um, do what, what the employee wants because they, they are just trying to attract and retain the talent.
Yeah. That was the conversation that we had earlier this week about the future of Detroit's Renaissance Center along the riverfront. After a break, we're going to hear a conversation with a man who tried to live the words of the Constitution literally. Stay with us for more Created Equal. Welcome back. I'm Stephen Henderson, joined by Kerry Jr. II in the studio, and you're listening to Created Equal. We want to turn our attention now to a conversation we had about the language of the U.S. Constitution and whether you could live literally according to that language, Kerry.
Yeah, uh, I think, I certainly would not be able to live literally, uh, according to the Constitution's language. But A.J. Jacobs, he's an author and journalist. He said, well, he didn't just believe he could, he did it. He went out and spent a whole year living according to the Constitution, went as far as wearing the clothes and garments of the times and building tools that were replicas of the time. He said he even wrote the book, a book where he documents this journey of his with that pen. And, uh, it's called The Year of Living Constitutionally: One Man's Humble Quest to Follow the Constitution's Original Meaning. And through it, he got some revelations about how he once thought about the Constitution and what it actually means and.
Yeah, no, it's a really clever way of getting us to think about the rights that exist in the Constitution and maybe what rights don't exist. I mean, I think a lot of people have ideas about the Constitution but haven't spent a lot of time reading it or thinking about it. And, and what A.J. does here gives you a kind of shorthand for, for trying to understand it in a, in a, in a very entertaining way. I mean, uh, the book is entertaining, he is entertaining, uh, this conversation was a lot of fun.
And the conversation is entertaining. That was a thing, you just had to, oh, it was there for you, Stephen. And this conversation that you're about to hear is entertaining.
Even the conversation was entertaining. Uh, A.J., I want to start, uh, this segment talking about why you did this and what you drew from it. I mean, obviously, this is, this is humorous and, and I, I give you a lot of credit for, uh, the, the sort of whimsical approach to all of this. But, but you're trying to make some serious points about where we come from, uh, and, and where we are.
Absolutely. And one of the big themes is just what you said. With this, this was a document written in 1780s, and it has amazing parts and it, it did set up our country, but we are also, this is 230 years later. So how much should we stick to the past and how much should we evolve it? Now, what's interesting is now there's a movement called originalism.
Yes.
Which grew up in the, in the eighties, became more powerful. And now five of the six conservatives on the Supreme Court identify as originalists in some way.
Mm hmm.
And what that means is they see the Constitution as the most important part of interpreting the Constitution is the original meaning.
The words themselves, yes.
The words, the text. Now, on the other side, you have, sometimes they're called living constitutionalists or pragmatists who say, yes, look at the text, but let's also look at other, the, how, how a Supreme Court decision would affect society or how we've ruled in the last few decades. And, uh, so this has been, and it is, the Dobbs decision on abortion was because of originalism. And the Bruin decision on guns has a lot to do with originalism. And the ultra originalists on the Supreme Court, for instance, Clarence Thomas, um, would probably go even further if, if he can get people to join him. So I'll give you an example to make it concrete. The Fourteenth Amendment says, uh, promises equal protection and due process. But, uh, and it was written right after the Civil War. Now, the people who wrote it, the original meaning and original intent had to do with protecting black men after the Civil War who were, uh, being persecuted by white southerners. So were those men thinking about women's rights? Were they thinking about gay rights or trans rights? Clarence Thomas would argue, no.
Yeah, they, well, they couldn't have been, really. I mean, those were not issues that looked the same then as they do now.
Exactly. Uh, so if you are a strict originalist, you say, well, the Supreme Court can say nothing about those issues according to the Fourteenth Amendment, maybe other parts, uh, that should be voted on by the states. Whereas a more living constitutionalist or pragmatist would say, no, the Fourteenth Amendment promises equal protection for all. And even if it only applied to one group then, now it should apply to all marginalized groups, women, uh, gay people, trans people, whatever. So that is a, that is a huge difference in how we are interpreting the Constitution.
Yeah, yeah. Um, you have a chapter in the book called Race and the Constitution, and that's something else that we, uh, we talk about a lot and argue about a lot. Um, you know, there is, there is, I think, a general consensus, uh, now that, um, that the Civil War Amendments, 13, 14, and 15, fundamentally changed the Constitution, almost our second founding, uh, of, of the nation because of the way they changed, uh, our notions of race and racial discrimination. Talk about how race affected the original Constitution and how that's changed over 200 and some years.
Right? Well, thank God it has changed and that it still needs to change more, but the, um, yeah, we have to wrestle with the fact that the Constitution was written by 55 white Christian men.
Mm hmm.
Uh, and, uh, and some of them were slave owners. And so I talked to some great scholars of Constitution and, and race about this, and they told me about, there, there are two approaches you can take. I mean, there are more, but there are also two big approaches. One is to burn the Constitution, to say, this is, which is the approach taken by the great abolitionist William, uh, oh my goodness, now I've forgotten his name, uh, William Lloyd Garrison, William Lloyd Garrison. Uh, before the Civil War, he would literally burn the Constitution. He would go on stage and burn it in front of thousands and say, this is a pact with the devil because it has, uh, condoned slavery. Now Frederick Douglass, the great abolitionist and orator and thinker, at first he was on Garrison's side of, but let's burn the Constitution. But somewhere in the 1850s, he had a change of heart. And he said, instead of burning it, let's try to picture it as a promissory note. So it promises equality. It uses words like equality and, and freedom and liberty and general welfare. Let's make it live up to those promises and make America conform to what the Constitution promised us.
Mm hmm.
And that is the language that I believe Martin Luther King used and also Obama in his great speech on race. They both talked about how the seeds of liberty and equality and racial equality are in the Constitution and, and the struggle is to try to make the Constitution live up to that.
Yeah, yeah. This idea of a more perfect union, which of course is the phrase that gets used in the, in the preamble.
Right.
They seem to acknowledge that, hey, we're, we're, we're trying to be better. We're trying to get better. And, uh, that seems to forecast that that's not a, a singular exercise contained to one time. It's something we should be doing, uh, perhaps forever.
I agree. That's a great point. And, and they knew they had, as we discussed, huge flaws, but they knew it was an imperfect document. George Washington wrote a letter to his nephew a couple of weeks after the convention saying, this is an imperfect document and it's up to future generations to try to make it better. And they did include a mechanism to make it better, which are the amendments. And thankfully, we've been able to pass 27 amendments. But that's not a, that's not a lot out of the 11,000 that have come to the congressional floor. And the problem is, I think if you talk to the founders, they would be shocked by how hard it is to pass an amendment now.
Yeah.
They, they did not foresee these two rigid parties that would, uh, that make it so hard because you need two thirds in, in Congress and you need three quarters in the, in the state legislatures to pass an amendment. So now we haven't passed one since the early nineties.
Right.
And I am worried we're not going to pass one for a long time. And, uh, this, to me, is one of, one of the problems that we have to struggle with.
I think it's one of the kind of, it's, it's kind of a great American paradox, right? I mean, one thing that, uh, I think contributes to the stability of the country and the fact that it is, has survived as long as it has intact, um, uh, is that it is, it is really hard for things to change radically or quickly, right?
Right.
That there is this inertia that's kind of built in to the institutionalism that the Constitution sets up that, that makes it really hard to, to just kind of go and do something that, that, uh, is rash. Um, on the other hand, uh, you know, the founders themselves talked about the need for constant change. And, and Jefferson, at one point, um, says, you know, i- i- if any of this survives for more than 20 years at a time or something like that, then, then people aren't doing their jobs as, as Americans, that, that they should be rethinking it. And, and the tension between those two things, I think, is, is, is really interesting. I mean, there are times when we feel like things are moving too fast, I suppose, or some people feel like they are. And then there are times when we feel like good gracious, uh, it's taking forever to get us to, to a better space.
Right. That's such a good point. And yeah, and I think that's exactly it, the tension between flexibility and stability. And you look at other countries have chosen, France, for instance, has had, I think, 13 or 16 constitutions. And, um, so, uh, you have to balance those two. I do think we've, we're too on the side of stability. It's too hard to change. And I don't think the founders would have approved. One of my favorite virtues that the founding fathers exhibited was this flexibility of mind. They would change their minds. And you don't see this in politicians today. My friend Ben Franklin, who is my favorite of the founding fathers, he's got his own flaws, but overall, he's, uh, he's, uh, he's pretty good. And he said, or more than pretty good.
He's pretty good.
Yeah. He's, uh, he's certainly better than me.
Mine is Rufus King. And, uh, I've always kind of idolized him. I mean, he was such a strong abolitionist that I've always kind of, uh, I guess, tacked toward his thinking, but, but Franklin was right up there.
Yeah. Well, Franklin was in the, I think he founded an abolitionist society towards the end.
He did.
He had an enslaved person for some of his life.
He did.
So that's not.
He did.
Um, but he, uh, he said during the Constitutional Convention, he said, the older I get, the less certain I am of my own opinions. And he told this lovely little story about, he said, there's a French lady who said to her sister, it's so curious, so strange. I'm the only person I've ever met who is correct on every issue in the world.
On everything.
Yeah. And his point, of course, we're all the French lady. He was very aware that we all have this bias to think that we're right all the time, and he fought against it. And he liked to change his mind. And that is something I would love for politicians and just Americans like me to get back to, that changing your mind, it's not flip flopping or, it's, it's good if you have new evidence or you see a, a new way of thinking about it. Change your mind. That should be rewarded, not, uh, not punished.
Well, it's one of the great problems we have with social media too, right? Everyone is expected on social media to be absolutely perfect in what they say and how they think. And the, there, there's almost no space for rethinking because then you get attacked, right? Well, you said this before and, you know, people pull out old quotes and, and out of context and say, well, you, you once said this. And it's like, well, I did, but I've been thinking about it and I've been talking to people and, and I think differently. And, and there is a built in just intolerance for that right now.
Oh, yeah. I love that. And a few things occurred to me when you said that. First is, at the convention, they specifically did not record the names of people in their votes.
Right.
Uh, because they wanted them to be able to change their mind without people saying, oh, you're a hypocrite. You, uh, so that, they built that into the Constitutional Convention. The second thing is, at the time, newspapers, Ben Franklin's newspaper came out twice a week. And I, so I tried to replicate that in my own news consumption. And it is, I mean, you should of course listen to this show every day, but other than that, you should, I think, being fire hosed with these negative stories 16 hours a day is really bad for our mentality and our psyche and, and having a little distance where you can think of solutions and say, look at the big picture and only getting your news in, whether it's half an hour a day or, you know, twice a week seems a little radical, but an hour a day and then cut yourself off. You don't need to know every, like, every time Biden goes up 0.3% or point down 2%.
Yeah, well, guilty as charged. I mean, I'm looking at the, at the feed on Twitter constantly.
Me too.
Especially in an election year, I don't seem to be able to, uh, to look away. That was our conversation with journalist and author, A.J. Jacobs, who spent a year living out the words of the Con- Constitution quite literally. Uh, and that's the end of our weekly, our weekly recap, Kerry.
Yeah, I mean, I think that was a great way to end it. It's nice, lighthearted. I, I get excited when we can find ways to approach these sometimes really dense topics in a really like disarming way. And I think A.J. Jacobs had a brilliant approach to this. I, I wish I could, I should say. Be the kind of person that can pursue this type of approach and commit fully to this type of bit the way he did.
Yeah, no, I, I couldn't, I couldn't do it and, and I certainly couldn't turn it into the way he did, this really profound statement about our rights and what we think about our rights, what we know about our rights and how we protect those rights. I thought that turn that he was able to make was, was really astonishing. So great work by him and, and a really fun conversation with him. That's it for Created Equal. You can listen to recent episodes at WDET.org. That's it for Created Equal. You can listen to recent episodes at WDET.org. And make sure to subscribe to our podcast where you can leave us a rating or a review. Created Equal is produced by Cary Jr. II and David Lines. The audio editing is by Connor Anderson and the music is by Sam Bobian. Created Equal is a production of WDET, a listener supported service of Wayne State University.